Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, staff, my colleagues on council, and guests. I want to welcome you to our public work session. And at this time, I will ask all of my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Five members of City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to start today to provide counsel and the public with some information on law and policy as it relates to collective bargaining. I'm going to have two members from the Jackson Lewis Law Group come up, and they're going to -- your ladies, if you could come up to the podium. They're going to state their names and what they do for the law group, and they will get started. Thank you so much. You have a clicker, so as you want to progress through the slides.
Good evening.
Welcome, ladies, and I want to welcome you to our council work session. I think I want to pronounce your name correctly, Attorney Vaikara and Attorney Radovic.
That is correct.
All right. You have the floor, ladies.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Glover and members of the City Council. We're here to talk about public bargaining in the Commonwealth of Virginia as it applies to public sector employees. My name's Mila Radovic, and this is Christina Vaikara. We are attorneys at Jackson Lewis. Christina, do you want to give an overview of Jackson Lewis?
Sure. We're a national labor and employment firm. We represent employers throughout the country with regards to their labor and employment needs. We've been around since the 50s, I guess. We're about 64 offices, 990 or so attorneys throughout the country. We're actually out of the Norfolk, Virginia office.
Yes, so we're right down the street from City Hall. We're going to first start off by talking about the history of public bargaining in Going back to 1935, the Supreme Court of Virginia had the case of Carter v. Thompson. It actually started from the city of Norfolk. In that case, the city manager proposed a rule that would have limited public bargaining for firefighters. The public employees actually ended up challenging the city manager's right to propose that rule, and they sought injunction from the Circuit Court of the city of Norfolk, which was ultimately denied. On appeal, that case, the Supreme Court of Virginia found that the city manager had the authority and discretion to implement that rule. And this kind of starts the chain of a back and forth between public bargaining being available under Virginia law and not being available. In 1946, the Virginia General Assembly adopted a Senate resolution which made it -- which stated that it was against public policy for any public employer to recognize or negotiate with a public union. It did, however, say that public employees could form to organize labor unions to discuss conditions of employment, but it was that piece of bargaining that was not allowed. And then in 1973, the General Assembly recognized House Joint Resolution 208, which recognized the right of public employees to contribute to the development of employment policies that affect them. While the Virginia General Assembly is going back and forth on this issue, we see a back and forth that is reflected with the Attorney General's office. We see in the 1960s, they issue an opinion saying that it's not recognized in Virginia. We then see the following. Almost four or five years later, the attorney issues a new opinion that says collective public -- I'm sorry, collective bargaining agreements entered into by the school board would be doubtfully enforced, and that the authority of political subdivisions to enter into collective bargaining agreements should be found on a specific grant of authority rather than implied from the existing powers of political subdivisions. We also see this issue promulgate in front of the courts. In the 1970s, we saw significant litigation over whether or not public employers -- public employees have the right to engage in collective bargaining. One of the first cases, or one of the cases that's important in this context, is Carroll v. city of Norfolk. The Eastern District of Virginia held that a local ordinance forbidding firefighters to organize -- firefighters' organization to affiliate with the labor union was unconstitutional because it denied employees' right to associate. Nonetheless, the following year, in a separate case with the Newport News Fire Fires Association, Local 794 versus the city of Newport News, the Eastern District of Virginia said that absent any legislative mandate from Congress or the General Assembly, they concluded that city of employees -- city of Newport News employees did not -- they did not have to collectively bargain with them. And then we get to the ultimate case in 1977. The Supreme Court of Virginia is faced with another decision regarding whether or not they want to recognize public bargaining. And at that point, based off of those circumstances, they once again found that Virginia does not allow for public bargaining. And they looked at this long legislative history or combination of legislative history. Bills had been introduced, they had failed to pass. They looked at the Attorney General opinions that had gone back and forth over the years. They had looked at prior opinions from courts, and they ultimately decided there was no legal authority in Virginia to allow for public bargaining. We see this stay the position for over 30 years until in 2021 -- I'm sorry, in 2020, when the Virginia General Assembly introduced legislation that would allow public bargaining for the first time, it would be statutorily authorized. The bill, as it was initially introduced, was actually set to take effect that year, so it would have gone into effect months after passing. But after it reached the desk of the then-governor, he added a recommendation that not go into effect until July 1st, 20 -- I'm sorry, until May 1st, 2021. So cities and municipalities had about 11 months to prepare for introducing those types of ordinances if they were interested in. And as you'll see from the map, there has been municipalities from counties and cities to school boards that have introduced and passed those types of resolutions and ordinances. And those ordinances that have already been passed actually provide important guidance on what the city's options are when it comes to passing a similar resolution or a similar ordinance. And I'm going to turn it over to Christina that's going to talk about some of the issues under the statute.
Thank you. All right, so let's talk about where we are now. So under Section 40.1 hyphen 57.2 of the code, there is no municipality or local government that has the ability to engage in either recognition of the union or to bargain with the union unless -- we've highlighted that kind of key language there, which is why we're here today talking -- unless in the case of the county, city, or town, that authority is provided for or permitted by a local ordinance or a resolution. But let's talk a little bit more about what is and what is not in the code. When Mila and I were preparing for this, we took -- you know, we had thought about including some information about the National Labor Relations Act, which is really the only federal statute. There's really no state statutes that kind of give that type of framework and structure about collective bargaining and, you know, moving forward in an organized, represented fashion. But we took that out because we did think it was a little bit confusing, and I think it's a little more important to focus on what is in our actual code because that is what governs all of you here today. So what is collective bargaining? The Code of Virginia does not define what collective bargaining is. We know, though, historically, it's the process by which representatives of the employer meet with representatives of the employee, typically the union, to negotiate the terms and conditions of employment or, you know, terms and conditions of their employment for those employees that are within the bargaining unit. Typically, once recognized, the union is the exclusive bargaining agent for the employees within that bargaining unit. And employers may no longer negotiate directly with those employees regarding terms and conditions of employment once that union representation is in place. You know, if an ordinance or resolution is passed, then the municipality can explicitly define what collective bargaining is, so you don't necessarily have to follow what it is historically. You don't have to follow what it is under the National Labor Relations Act or how it's been interpreted by the courts. You know, you are allowed to define what that is, and we included an example there from the county of Arlington so that you can see, you know, how they have negotiated that definition. Who can engage in collective bargaining? Under the statute, any county, city, or town. When you actually drill down into the code, that's actually different than the bills that were passed. It adds in any local school board as well to that definition, so we get a bit of an expansion from what was originally passed. Who can't engage in collective bargaining? No officer elected pursuant to Article 7, Section 4 of the Constitution of Virginia or any employee of such officer. Those are individuals that are actually excluded by definition under the code. So ultimately, if a municipality adopts a resolution or ordinance allowing for collective bargaining, that municipality has the ability to determine who and who cannot be part of that bargaining unit. So again, you're defining what it is to bargain, you're defining who can be in that bargaining unit. If we look historically at how a bargaining unit has been defined, if we look at, you know, again, for example, the National Labor Relations Act, how that's been interpreted by the National Labor Relations Board, it's typically defined as two or more employees that are acting concertedly, who have some kind of a community of interest, and they're reasonably grouped together for purposes of collective bargaining. Common interests historically have included things like common supervision, work functions, job duties, and work locations. In more recent years, we've seen that be expanded a little more broadly interpretation. So again, that is something that you can control the definition of under the code. We've given you another example here of how the city of Alexandria, in their article as their recognition article, defined who they were recognizing as part of that bargaining unit. Again, here's another example from the county of Arlington, and we're not going to read those to you. I think those are in the materials that you have, so you can read those if you'd like. Who cannot engage in collective bargaining? So historically, again, historically, and when I say historically, it's because it's not in your code. It's coming from the National Labor Relations Act, National Labor Relations Board, which really is kind of the only vast resource we've got to kind of look at, maybe how you might go about this. But this is just a suggestion from history. It's not necessarily where you choose to go because you've got a lot of autonomy in how you do that. So historically, supervisory and managerial employees have been excluded from those bargaining units. In the ordinance, for example, passed by the county of Arlington, they defined employee as directly excluding supervisors and managers, which again, would be consistent with what we've seen historically.
Are you going to stop me when it's your turn? So a city or a municipality can pass a resolution or an ordinance either voluntarily. We did see this after the initial statute passed, or it can do so within 120 days of receiving a certification from a majority of public employees in a unit considered by such employees to be appropriate for the purposes of collective bargaining. So one of two things can trigger it. Either it can be completely voluntary, or it can do so after receiving a request from a designated -- self-designated group of employees. The statute uses the term "unit," and this is something that Christina touched on a minute ago. We see terms throughout this code section, but they aren't necessarily defined. And so the code does not define what unit means and doesn't identify what is an appropriate unit, but based off of the way that the statute's written, if a city or county has not already passed a statute or passed an ordinance or resolution outlining what the certification process is, it really is up to the employees for them to self-determine whether or not they are appropriate within the appropriate unit for collective bargaining. However, once an ordinance is passed, that typically -- this ordinance should outline the process for certification. And we'll talk a little more about certification later on in the presentation, but it's important to highlight that it has to be within 120 days of the -- of a request being made. And it's not necessarily that the council or county or whatever municipality is faced with the decision. It's not that they have to pass a resolution at the end of the 120 days or pass a fully-fledged ordinance. It's simply that they have to take a vote as to whether or not they're going to act one way or another. And this process can take quite some time. We did include a timeline in the presentation from the city of Fairfax outlining how long it took from that -- for them to go through this entire process. And they have -- that they started working on it prior to the statute actually taking it into -- going into effect. And that's partially because the statute does require some thought and process into how does the city want to do this? What are the conditions that we want to take into account? Who is the bargaining unit? And so this process from, as you can see from this timeline, they started working on it in October 2020, and it wasn't until June 7th, 2022, that they actually designated someone to be their labor relations administrator. So it can take some time to, from start to finish, to get this going. And once a statute -- I mean, I'm sorry, once a resolution or ordinance is passed, there are certain provisions that have to be included in the resolution or ordinance, specifically that piece about what constitutes certification, what is the process, as well as what is decertification. And just to give some context, the process of certification is essentially a group of employees electing someone to be their exclusive bargaining agent. That can take a number of forms under the National Labor Relations Act. There is a specific procedure, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that is the procedure that a city or county has to adopt. For purposes of an example, we did include what the county of Arlington, the process that they outlined for recognizing a exclusive bargaining agent. We also included their decertification process. This can obviously vary from city to county. It just ultimately depends on what the municipality wants to do, so there is room for this to go one way or another.
All right. So once an ordinance or a resolution is passed, whether terms or conditions can be included, this will be shocking. The statute, again, does not tell us what the definition is. So again, you get to kind of control or identify what terms or conditions will be included as part of the terms of those bargaining. If the municipality passes that ordinance resolution, again, you can define that scope of that bargaining. So what is a CBA? The statute doesn't define for us what a collective bargaining agreement is, or affectionately what we call a CBA. Historically, again, a collective bargaining agreement is a contract between the employer and the exclusive bargaining agent or representative for those employees outlining the terms and conditions of employment. The statute does not indicate how long the CBA has to be in play or in effect, or the process of ratifying, or even, as Mila pointed out a second ago, the process of decertifying a union. It doesn't -- we don't have definitions or guidance with regards to grievances or with regards to the arbitration process. All of the details that you would typically see in any CBA would need to be defined because we don't have, again, we don't have the National Labor Relations Act with a very strict set of definitions or 100, you know, however many years of history and National Labor Relations Board decisions to govern or control what we want to do. So it does give you kind of a rare, unique opportunity to kind of really create a footprint and blueprint for what you want to do as part of this process. What is an unfair labor practice? Because again, this is going to be something that you guys are going to have to think about, how you want to define it. The statute doesn't tell us what a ULP is, doesn't outline the process for filing one or adjudicating a ULP. Historically, if it was part of the National Labor Relations Act, those would go to the National Labor Relations Board. They'd be heard by an administrative law judge. We don't have that process in place here under the code. You know, there are examples up there on the board of things that have historically been deemed to be an unfair labor practice. That doesn't mean those have to be things that you would want to agree to or even recognize. But those are just examples, again, coming from a federal platform with a statute that does have a little more definition under it. Under the NLRA, the followings, again, are examples of unfair labor practices. We're not going to go through all of them here, you know, but there are certain things in there that you're going to have to look at and decide whether or not you want to include those as a ULP or not. And so the NLRA also includes ULPs on the part of the labor organization or its agent. So again, it can run both ways, and you have to decide whether or not you're going to allow it to run in any direction, or if you're going to allow it to run in both ways, let alone define what those ULPs will be. Which gets us to, if you allow ULPs and you allow grievances or as part of this process, who's going to be the decider of fact, right? Who's going to resolve those disputes between the employer and the union and the employees? The statute doesn't outline a process or give us a procedure for doing that. Those disputes, those issues can arise as early as the negotiation process and often do. And so you have to kind of have that framework set in place really before you even substantively begin to negotiate anything. Ultimately, the municipality has the sole discretion to outline a process and a procedure in its ordinance or resolution for this dispute resolution, and we've seen different ways of doing that. For instance, this is county of Arlington's process. Again, we're not going to read it. We wanted to make sure you had it as a reference. Which then gets us to, what if you can't agree? What if someone doesn't like a ruling or a decision? Historically, in a federal context, we'd be talking about whether or not an employee could strike or a union could strike. And, you know, in our code section, we actually don't allow that. You know, if an employee does strike, there is language that says that they will have been -- well, they will have been deemed to terminate their employment, and they will be ineligible for employment in any position or capacity during the next 12 months in the Commonwealth or in any county, city, town, or other political subdivision of the Commonwealth or by any department or agency of any of them. So that actually is addressed, so that kind of gives some peace of mind in terms of continued operations, in terms of why they built that in there.
As we went through that Q and A portion of what does this mean, what does that mean, we tried to do it in the process that it would naturally flow if the city did decide to pass an ordinance or resolution for purposes of what would be defined in the ordinance from collective bargaining to the bargaining unit to what happens when the city ultimately does decide to enter into a collective bargaining agreement. So I hope that provides you guys some guidance on what the process normally flows like. Typically, it starts off with a certification, a union is elected, and then from there, there would be negotiations for the collective bargaining agreement. As Christina mentioned, there can be ULPs once there is a collective bargaining agreement in place. There can also be strikes, and ultimately, if there is a resolution of the union, that process is known as decertification. But next, we're going to cover what are the employee interests and employer concerns when it comes to having collective bargaining in the workplace. Typically, employees express interest in having or being a member of a union for the following reasons, although this can ultimately vary by person to person. Typically, the reasons provided are higher wages, better benefits. We did look at some collective bargaining agreements that are typically for public employers or public employees, and these are the conditions that we typically see included in those CBAs. Employees typically request better benefits when it comes to time off, healthcare, retirement and pension plans, as well as life insurance. We also see employees ask to join unions or express interest in joining unions because of improved safety, as well as fairness and equity in the workplace. Other considerations are some employees express interest in engaging in unions because they often provide grievance procedures through collective bargaining agreements. And a grievance procedure is similar to the one that's provided by the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's essentially the process of saying, I'd like to dispute this. Let's say it's a written warning or suspension. It walks the person through the process if they would like to say have that rescinded. But that is something that is typically listed as a concern when it comes to why people want to join unions, as well as job security and just having an overall voice in the workplace. Since the passage of -- many of these municipalities have already passed resolutions and ordinances, but prior to them passing or somewhere along the process, there is a nonprofit in the Commonwealth of Virginia called the Commonwealth Institute for Fiscal Analysis, and they actually issued several position and research statements regarding collective bargaining as it applies to public employees about why cities and municipalities should engage in public bargaining. And they highlighted two of the main reasons is, again, was wages and benefits. Based off of their analysis, they found that local public employees in Virginia are typically paid about 30% less than their private employee counterparts, as well as they have less benefits than their private employee counterpart. The different research and position statements also highlighted several other issues. We did want to provide them to the council in case you would like to look at them. They also include testimonials from employees from local jurisdictions about why they would like to see collective bargaining, but it does overall highlight many of the reasons we see employees asking to join unions.
All right, so we want to also kind of cover or address some of the reasons that employers might have concerns, common concerns that we've seen voiced by employers with regards to collective bargaining. The first being certainly that CBAs are a structured framework that gets superimposed over that relationship with the employees now that are in that bargaining unit. And it can limit flexibility, and it can limit the ability of the employer, the city in this case, to kind of pivot and respond to whatever concerns might be, whether that be, you know, fiscal concerns. All of a sudden, COVID was a really good example. There are things that an employer may not be able to respond to exactly as they'd like without following a process and a procedure now. There is a loss of direct communication for certain things. There will be some things typically that are retained back by the employer that they are able to obviously communicate directly with employees on in terms of performance of job duties, et cetera, but there will be a loss of direct communication on many issues that are subject to the terms and conditions that are subject to that CBA. There is an emphasis historically on seniority in that employment relationship in a CBA. So typically, if an employer has to do a reduction in force for some reason, you know, you're not always able as the employer to select your best and your brightest talent. You may sometimes have to defer to a seniority framework where people who are more senior get kept over those who might be more junior but maybe better at their job. And so again, that's something that an employer has to think about, whether they want to negotiate and include as part of their CBA. The union relationship can sometimes be viewed as adversarial. Sometimes it's viewed as friendly. It just depends on what kind of relationship is struck between that employer and that union. CBAs can require layers of review and new formalities that may not otherwise be in place. It does require a new way to train supervisors and managers on how to, as Mila mentioned a few seconds ago, how to discipline so they don't result in grievances, how to, you know, manage employees within the framework of the CBA, those new rules that are now superimposed over that employment relationship. Increased operating costs. These come at us from a number of different levels. Talk a little bit in the next frame, a little bit more about what those look like. And then obviously, as we mentioned, strikes, there is a built-in safety net a little bit within the code itself, but that doesn't mean it can't happen. It just means that it can have impact or consequences if it does happen. But, you know, certainly the increased operating costs are really a big one, the cost just to even begin the process and then manage it for however many years that it remains in place. Those contracts last three to five years typically. You have to renegotiate. That renegotiation process takes time. It usually takes a team of people, usually requires legal counsel to be involved, you know, and then as you've got those grievances and those arbitrations that may come up throughout the process, those also are things that potentially can cost money. So what, again, like I said, increased operating costs. There is obviously the increase in wages and benefits if employees get, you know, what they're looking for, typically ask for a union to be brought in for. You know, those are increased wages and benefits, which could increase your payroll, your costs and expenses that may or may not be budgeted, may or may not be easy to cover, costs associated with, like I said, drafting and implementing those, the ordinance and the resolution to start this process and then negotiating and the management of that CBA, and then creation of whatever new jobs may be specific to the collective bargaining. And some of those cities and some of those municipalities that we pointed out to as examples, in some instances, a labor relations coordinator was created. That's a new role. That's a new position. That's going to have to have funds to pay that individual potentially. So, you know, again, there'll be different positions appointed specifically to assist with this process. We've included some examples of the increased operating costs for Fairfax County for '22 and then the Fairfax County Public Schools, just to give you an example of some of the how some of the municipalities have been impacted already. Same for Loudoun County. We've given you that example. And for Arlington County, as well as the city of Alexandria. So you can take a look at all of those increases there with regards to how that impacted or hit each office. So that is our overview of the code and So that is our overview of the code and how it operates and what's contained within it or not contained within it. Any questions?
Thank you both for that in-depth presentation. If my colleagues from council have any questions. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for your presentation on this evening. Just for some clarity, when mentioning what collective bargaining was as far as what the state has put together, in a lot of the presentation slides, it mentioned that the statute does not outline the terms and conditions. All of that's up to the municipality. So it's all up to city council, what can and cannot be collected, collective bargain, correct?
Correct.
So when we look at the scope of collective bargaining, that is also defined by the municipality, correct? So when we talk about employees striking, because it seems as if that's kind of been a misnomer of what collective bargaining can allow is striking. So of course, anything can happen, but you also may have mentioned that there's consequences that the state has put into place if an employee does strike. And they can strike with or without a union. I mean, by the definition of the word strike. So collective bargaining is what we as a council can agree to, and based on what the city council voted on in 2020 for the resolution, pretty much outlined word for word, which you all mentioned in your presentation. So I just commend the staff of the 2020 and that council for doing that unanimously in 2020. The only question I have for you all is, does Jackson Lewis PC, do y'all contract with localities?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so when I did some research on the firm, Jackson Lewis PC, it says that your firm, well, not your firm, but Jackson PC, Jackson Lewis PC, has a huge history of anti-union. And so that kind of just kind of takes me back, nothing to do with you all, but just the history that the firm has had with intentionally fighting unions and trying to discourage union participation. So I just wanted to put that out there. But thank you all so much for your presentation on this evening.
Sure, and I'm happy to address that, Councilman Tillage, if you don't mind. I think it's a misstatement to say that we're anti-union or that we've been anti-union or have discouraged people from doing that, but the law is what it is, whether we're talking federal or state. We represent employers, and as a result, we represent municipalities and counties and cities and states as part of that process, just like we would any private employer. We're governed by the same federal and state statutes that the union is as part of that process. I think it would be no different than saying, "Union attorneys are anti-business." I don't think that's a fair statement either. I think it's just a happenstance in terms of who you choose to represent as a client. And in our case, we have made a decision to represent exclusively employers and their workplace issues, and so I think that's a fair statement of what we do.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, Pam, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Attorneys Paquera and Radovic, for the presentation. The whole purpose of us going into these presentations is for us to become informed as a council, and while this is a lot of information to digest all at once, it's going to take us a while to review it and to understand it and to collectively come to a conclusion on how we proceed. I noticed inside of the presentation, it mentioned that 120 days from the request of whatever body wanted to proceed with that, and I think we're moving close on that now. But I believe with this council and our management team that it might be a good idea if we were allowed an opportunity for the public to do a public hearing on this. I know that we had done that before in 2020. I was a part of the council that voted for the resolution for us to look into this, but we had no idea the extent that it would cover and what we would even be voting on for it. So we're going to hear a couple presentations before our 120 days is up. But what I didn't hear, or maybe what I was looking for, or maybe it's just a question that I have to seek out to you or the other presenters or maybe even our management team, is how does collective bargaining weigh in with our management team and our HR departments? Because you're talking about a lot about wages and salaries and benefits and, you know, opportunities that people would be looking for if they had a collective bargaining option. But what I didn't hear is what would that do? I mean, just simple and plain, and I'm sure a lot of our listening audience would want to know how that affects our management and our HR departments as well.
Sure, so the management team is integral to administering and complying with that CBA once it's in place. They're integral and key to the negotiations. They understand what your current, in the example of human resources, they understand what your current benefits, your current increases, your current bonuses or merit plans, whatever they might be. They understand what those are. And so to the extent the bargaining unit is asking for changes to those, they're key to understanding what it is that you have, what it is that you may or may not be able to do, what you've done historically in the past that didn't work out potentially, and how that can impact. And keep in mind, you're not talking about 100% representation by the union. You're going to now have potentially, more likely than not, a split, right? You're going to have non-union employees and you're going to have union employees. And now you've got to have management and human resources be able to manage both of those buckets because they do require to be managed a little bit differently. And so I think you definitely, if you're asking for my opinion, I think you want their input. I think they've probably got significant knowledge that you would want to consider as you decide how you're going to carve these definitions and as you decide what you're going to include or exclude, that those are very deliberate, thoughtful decisions as opposed to just rubber stamping and following what another county or city may have done already. And I think just kind of harnessing all that knowledge, talking to your peers at other cities and other counties to find out what's worked, what's not worked, and I think encouraging those managers and supervisors and HR people to do the same, to gather as much information as you possibly can.
And I guess one final question. I guess with some of the localities that have already been approved, Arlington, Fairfax, Loudoun, I guess we would like to see maybe a budget of, you know, some of those things, the attorneys and the people that are going to be hired. I think that would be a good practice for us to be able to see that so that we know how much we're extracting from our budget to make it work.
We, inside the PowerPoint presentation, we actually did include, I'm going to go back a couple slides and I can walk the council through it. Going back to Fairfax County for fiscal year 2022, they actually increased their budget close to $1 million to include about six full-time positions. And what you'll see throughout each of these cities is that the positions are typically added in three areas. There is someone who is essentially a labor relations administrator, although that's not necessarily what this council has to do if it elects to go this way. We see either additions to the human resource department, or we see a completely separate department created that is specifically focuses on collective bargaining or labor relations. Or we'll see addition to the city attorney's office, we'll see an addition to the city council's office or the city manager's office. So these positions are somewhat spread out over various offices, but the budget allocations do vary depending on what that city wants to do. There are some cities that decide, we're not at the position right now to have employees advocate on behalf, so let's go and consult a law firm, have them be our chief negotiator during this process. And that can obviously add different costs. It's not a constant cost as it would to have a full-time position, but it is an outside external cost.
Thank you. Mayor Matt.
Madam Manager, you have the floor.
So I wanted to kind of talk about just a few things. I know I really appreciate the presentation, the transparency of it, and you being able to offer some insight to collective bargaining for us, because this is a heavy decision, and I want it council to be aware of the education and knowledge as it relates. But can we talk about really quick, and I'm going to give you a couple of scenarios? Is one of the things that we'll have to do is change job descriptions. So if we go into a collective bargaining agreement, will job descriptions have to change based on what is allowed? And if it's relative to services, if there's a pothole that needs to be fixed and the negotiation has to go on with that unit, at that time, will that unit have to go into negotiations, make a determination? And if it's taking too long, because we are a service-oriented organization, it takes away, so another, like the manager can't do it because the union may say you're taking jobs away. I kind of want to talk about that. I also want to see if you could give me some insight. One of the things we're dealing with is crime, police. So right now, we have our police working mandatory overtime. As a union, would we not be able to do that, to say you can work mandatory overtime? How would that have to be negotiated at a time right now where we're short officers? How does that play into a role? Because maybe those are questions that I have, maybe council knows, but I just want it for the public and for a better understanding, how does that work?
Those are all things that you have to negotiate. So I kind of, I guess, backing up, I think, to what I heard was one of your questions, which is while you're in the process of negotiating, if those things have been put on the table, that they would like changes to job descriptions, they would like limitations on who can perform work, that is limiting it to the bargaining unit and not allowing managers or supervisors to do the work, which would be historically a typical provision in a CBA. Those are things that until they're agreed upon, the status quo should prevail, right? And so that would be certainly a position that I think, for representing employers, would be the position we would take. Now, I don't know if a union would agree with us, but I mean, until an agreement is reached, there is no agreement. I think the scope of what you're talking about are things that you have to seriously weigh about whether or not you want to put those on the table as part of your negotiations in the first place. Are those going to be terms and conditions that you're willing to negotiate over? Are you willing to negotiate over job descriptions? Are you willing to negotiate over hours worked or mandatory overtime? Maybe you're not willing to do it for certain units, but you are for others that are not critical service units, right? Or emergency service units. This all goes to, you have to do your due diligence and your homework before you get into this process so that you know what you are buying into, you're controlling those definitions and those terms at a level that you believe that you can be successful at negotiating and managing so that you don't set yourself up for failure as part of the CBA process.
And the other part of that is knowing what to do or knowing what you want to do if there is an impasse, if you're unable to reach, if you decide we are going to bargain over this issue, what are the steps going to be to address impasses? How is that going to be resolved? That oftentimes, people don't think about how to resolve issues until they're at that issue, and so in the process of drafting an ordinance or resolution, that's something that has to be considered in order to have a fully functioning ordinance or resolution.
Right. Yeah, that arbitration process is very, it's something, it's the beginning you need to put on the table.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First of all, you had indicated primarily your firm represents employers. And in that representation of different employer groups, whether that be municipalities or regular corporate groups, I noticed that in collective bargaining, under an agreement, it says that, under the code, that you can exclude, I guess, managers and supervisors. And I guess just the way I'm thinking from an employer-employee relationship and excluding the very people that would be managing those workers, how does that work? I mean, is there a conflict? Is there typically in that arrangement a conflict? Because, for example, I know that within a union, there may not be all of the employees within that collective bargaining group that are in the union, right? Is that fair?
Right.
So all those members of the organization which want collective bargaining may not be in that collective bargaining group. And then when you exclude supervisors and management, how does that work from a coordination standpoint, from a harmonious workplace standpoint? To me, that would seem to be kind of a challenge.
Sure, so you have to exclude some supervisors and managers ultimately, because otherwise you won't have anyone to supervise and manage, right?
Right.
If everyone's part of the bargaining unit, there's no liaison between the city and that bargaining unit to act on behalf of the city.
Right.
What we have seen, and I think we've got some examples in the materials, we have seen some cities and municipalities allow lower-level supervisors who might be interested in bargaining form their own unit. They've got obviously some shared interests with regards to their terms and conditions. Maybe they're not appropriate to be part of the larger bargaining unit for whatever that service might be, but they might be better as a standalone unit. And we have seen some of those municipalities allow that. But typically, that's your lower-level supervisors
Right.
that are kind of, you know, that are maybe in between the regular bargaining unit employee and supervisors or managers that are truly engaging in supervisory managing managerial functions on a daily basis.
And those managers and supervisors, in the eyes of the law, are essentially the city itself.
Right.
If you're in a supervisory position, you have the, unfortunately, you can bind the company or the organization to liability. And in the process of being a supervisor-manager, you're expected to uphold certain duties, including making sure you properly and accurately administer the CBA. And so they're really tasked with administering it, no differently than the council would be, or no differently than human resources would be, or the city attorney's office. They are essentially the city when it comes to enforcing it. So it's important that they're properly trained and understand what the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agree are, that they understand what can be unlawful labor practice. They really are where liability can lie. And so that's part of the reason they are excluded, because they are essentially the start and stop of where liability begins and ends.
Thank you. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for a very thorough presentation. I'm going to come back to the seeing managers question, because I think I understood the answer, but I want to make sure I understand the answer. So she gave you a scenario where there was a pothole and her team needed to direct overtime to get it fixed after hours. You answered that's something that you would negotiate. It's not something that we would negotiate in the course of fixing the pothole. It's something that we would negotiate as part of the collective bargaining agreement to build into the CBA the process that we're going to agree to so that if an emergency comes up, everybody knows, the labor knows, management knows, here's the process we're going to follow to decide who's going to go fix the pothole and how that's going to happen, correct?
That is correct.
And then it's kind of the other piece of your answer was, but then it depends on the terms and conditions that we negotiate into the CBA. We could choose to not negotiate the direction of overtime to deal with emergencies as a T and C that we just choose to leave out of the collective bargaining agreement, and then the answer is back to your status quo. So whatever we're doing now, if it's not addressed by the Ts and Cs in the collective bargaining agreement, status quo prevails, yes?
Yes, but you'd want to make sure you make that clear in your CBA language.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's also important to remember that any disputes, regardless of whether you think it's clear or not, within result and attempt to try to resolve it either through your administrator that you've assigned to that or litigation. So it isn't like everyone understands and there's never a problem. So I just want to be clear on that point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the clearer the CBA can be, the better likelihood, chance of success you've got in kind of complying with it. But to the city attorney's point, that is, it is typical for CBAs to result in grievances that lead to arbitrations and/or litigation, you know, where the parties don't agree on what the terms of that agreement are. It's just like any other contract.
So it's incumbent on us then, as we define the scope of the collective bargaining agreement, which terms and conditions are going to be included or not, that we think our way through these scenarios to make sure that going in, we've defined, if this happens, then here's what the CBA says about that so that it's clear on both labor and and management side, here's the process to go fix that, address that issue.
Right. Yeah, I mean, as comprehensive as we can make the language, the better.
Sure.
City manager, you have the floor.
But right now, if a pothole needs to be fixed, it can be fixed because we're not in a union.
That's my understanding.
But I think the point is, even if we are thoughtful about approaching collective bargaining agreement, the pothole still can be fixed by either excluding fixing potholes after hours from the terms and conditions covered by a collective bargaining agreement, or by specifically addressing how you're going to assign somebody from your team to go fix the pothole after hours.
But that's only if they agree. So, I mean, you're talking about a whole process. That's after the negotiation, after the arbitration, after you go back and forth, after you come to some level of agreement, that has to have been documented, but still can go through a whole process because they may not agree. So it's just, it's levels of understanding, and I just want to make sure that...
Right. So that could become, let's take the hypothetical pothole issue. If there, if both parties cannot reach an agreement as to how that situation would be handled, then, you know, as Mila pointed out, then you might be at an impasse. How that holds up the process, you know, depends upon how it gets worked out, or it doesn't get worked out, and whether or not we've properly identified what that impasse procedure might be as we negotiate the CBA. And you can see, as for some of the timeline that we included in there, you can see, it is a long process. And this is part of the reason, is because everything has to be done very deliberately, thoughtfully, and requires negotiation, that may or may not be successful all the time.
Thank you both. We really appreciate you coming and providing that information.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. Madam manager, you have the floor.
Ms. Neal, I thought I saw her in the building. Okay. Next, we have a legislative package presentation by Sherri Neal.
Good evening, Ms. Neal.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening.
The manager is just going to be walking the ladies off, so you're welcome to begin.
So, good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council, city staff. Okay. So, hi. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to share with you our proposed 2024 state and federal legislative initiatives. My presentation this evening is going to proceed as follows. I'm going to first touch on a few items that in the 2023 budget that are specifically targeted to the city of Portsmouth. I will then give you a little bit of an update, you probably have heard much of it anyway, about the downtown Midtown Tunnel tolls, the changes in the program. Following that, I will share with you our proposed 2024 Portsmouth state initiatives. At this time, we have two legislative requests and two budgetary requests. We have a list of statewide public policy initiatives that we will support, monitor, or oppose. Following that would be the federal public policy initiatives that's proposed, after which I will quickly just remind you about the 2024 General Assembly session and the kind of environment we're going into. I've already shared this with you at my earlier presentation in the spring, just a quick reminder. And then important dates and steps, and next steps, and questions and answers. So, as you may recall, when I came before you in the spring, the budget, 2023 budget had not been passed by the general assembly. So in the interim, there was meetings with the money committees. They came to an agreement in September. The governor signed it into agreement and to, into law on the 14th of September. What I wanted to highlight here is that these three initiatives, which directly impact the city of Portsmouth, we are, we received $4.8 million for the High Street Innovation Corridor. This is the city's match to the $19.3 million federal grant that we received for the corridor, which fully funds this project. The other item that we have is the $500,000 direct allocation to the city of Portsmouth from the firearm prevention and intervention grants. And the General Assembly created this new program called the Safer Communities Programs, Safer Communities Programs. They placed $10 million in that pot. And out of that pot, three cities were chosen to receive a minimum of $2.5 million each, which we are one of the three cities, as you can see here. I just wanted to share with you, the italicized language at the bottom is directly out of the budget language, where it says, "The recipient locality shall, one, use grant funds to employ a full-time position dedicated to planning, implementation, and coordination of community violence reduction strategies, including utilizing existing violence and reduction grants, and pursuing additional grant opportunities. And, two, provide quarterly reports to the Department of Criminal Justice Services, detailing expenditures to date to ensure alignment with requirements established in this paragraph." And I think that the council's foresight in creating the Crime and Gun Violence Prevention Commission was right on target because this seems to go right along with that, because a part of this funding, you have to hire a full-time position that can work with the commission, that can also work with our nonprofit organizations that are helping in this area, as well as our police department, the city staff, and other stakeholders, and to provide a more comprehensive approach that will also be able to generate measurable data and statistics. And I also, I'd be admised if I didn't stay here, we owe a huge, a huge thanks to Senator Lucas for these items right here. Senator Lucas is a senior legislator. She serves on the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee, as you well know. She's a budget conferee, and she was very instrumental in having these funds put into conference. We also have to thank the rest of our delegation members, who also supported this and kept it in the budget as it passed through to the governor. On the downtown Midtown Tunnel tolls update, a lot of you have probably heard this already. It's been on the news, and I believe it was sent out through Port City. Last year, when I came before you regarding this matter, and this is the issue with the tolls we've been dealing with for years now, of course, we would like to have them eradicated, but short of that, we've been working on trying to relieve the burden on our citizens. So last year, after a lot of efforts, the stakeholders all came together, and finally, in 2022, they changed some of the parameters of the program, which the annual gross income was $30,000, they increased it to $50,000. But as of the end of this month, it goes up to $65,000 per person, not per household. Would be good if it was net, but it's gross. So the changes of 2022, where they expanded the entire, they expanded it to the entire Hampton Road region, so it's not just for Portsmouth, for Norfolk any longer. Last year, they also increased it to 50% rebate for two axle vehicles with an EZ Pass account. The change here is now it's moving from 10 transactions a week to 14 transactions a week. The rebate was also changed last year to go onto your EZ Pass account the next day, and you don't have to wait any longer. That was changed in 2022. And also in 2022, they changed it from having a defined period of enrollment to continuous enrollment. At the bottom of this slide, there's some stats I thought was interesting that you might find of interest as well. Out of the number of enrollees, over, almost 40% are citizens of the city of Portsmouth. And out of that, they average about $23.45 in rebates a month. That's almost $1,000 a year. And now, with it being expanded to $65,000, there's going to be more of our citizens that will be able to take part in this particular program. Not only our citizens, but for our employees that work for the city that have to traverse those tunnels back and forth. This is going to be a big help to them as well. Moving forward to the 2024 proposed state legislative initiatives, our first one is on the Portsmouth City Charter. You're familiar with this. These were technical amendments that you've already approved, and you've had your public hearing on. This will be submitted as emergency legislation so that it will be signed into law as soon as it passes through the General Assembly and assigned by the governor. And that way, it doesn't have to wait to take place until the 1st of July, and it'll be in time for the elections of next year. Our next piece is legislation to establish a model criminal history screening policy. Housing for all, housing opportunities for all has become a big issue in the Commonwealth and in our region. Housing affordability, as well as access to housing, is very important. What this particular legislation is, is going to amend the landlord-tenant section of the Code of Virginia, dealing with persons who have a criminal history background, who are having problems securing rental housing. This doesn't apply if you're going to buy a house, but if you're trying to rent, it becomes a problem when your criminal history shows up, regardless of how long ago it was or whatever. And this is adding to the unhoused population in our communities, as well as adding to recidivative, recidivation rates. So this is what we're looking to do, and working with the housing opportunities made for all, made equal of Richmond, and the Virginia Poverty Law Center is helping, working with us on this. It also has been supported by the Virginia First Cities and for Virginia Municipal League and their public policy positions. State budget amendment requests, both of them are relating to the port of Virginia. The first one is dealing with our Port Host Communities Revitalization Fund. We'd like to see that increase from $1.5 million to at least $3 million a year. And this one also is to increase the road impact fees, which have been $1 million since about 2006. And the value of $1 million today is about $1,522,946 and some change. So there's been a 52.3% cumulative rate of inflation on that million dollars, making it worth about $477,053 at this point. So the port has expanded its operations over this time. They're looking at now building an inland port into Suffolk, which is going to add more truck traffic. So we're looking for them to increase this. These two budget amendments are also supported by our sister cities of Norfolk and Newport News. I'm not going to go through this whole list, I know for time's sake, but these are statewide public policy positions and initiatives that we are standing in sync with our affiliate organizations such as Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, so on and so forth. And these are some more in that list. And then our federal policy initiatives also are in keeping with our, the policy positions of the National League of Cities, as well as the Hampton Roads Federal Facilities and Military Alliance. So as far as 2024, as you recall, and you pretty well know by now, we have a big election coming up in a couple of weeks. All 140 seats are up in the General Assembly. There's going to be a lot of new faces up there. There's going to be a lot of new people who are not familiar with the legislative process. A lot of them have never been in local government. They don't understand what the needs of local government are. There's going to be a huge learning curve as to how the General Assembly operates. So we're having a nice, tight package that's going to be helpful, because there's a lot of changes going on. And I would like to also add at this point, if any of you have not had the opportunity yet to go to visit the new General Assembly building in Richmond, please do. It is gorgeous. They did a fabulous job up there. You wouldn't even recognize the building anymore. So quickly turning to the next dates, for October, November, we finalize in both of our legislative initiative packages. Election Day, of course, as I said, is next month, on the 7th. Our joint meeting with the General Assembly delegation is scheduled for the 28th of November. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, we weren't able to do it any sooner. And same evening is when council is scheduled to adopt the packages by resolution on the 28th. Prefiling doesn't begin until the 20th and it ends on the 30th, so we only have a 10-day turnaround period right now, which is really, really short. Having said that, I would like to add that I've been informed that a lot of the incumbent legislators are already having their legislation drafted so that they can beat the rush of all of these bills coming in. So if council approves those two items this evening, I can move forward. We're asking our incumbent legislators if they would consider having the legislated, drafted, legislation drafted. If, in fact, for some reason, they should wind up not succeeding in the election, that shouldn't be a problem, because we can also ask whomever their designated elected person would be to do the same thing, but at least we'd be ahead of the rush, and then make sure that our stuff is drafted properly. So in December, all drafts of legislations that were prefiled will be available for review by midnight, and any changes or corrections that need to be made have to be back into Legislative Services before, by the 5th at 5:00 p.m. of January. First day of session is the 10th. This is the long session. We're up there till March this year. And then it's also the 3rd of January is the second session of Congress, 118th Congress. In closing, before we go to questions and answers, I would like to thank council for the creation of the Portsmouth City Council Legislative Committee. I appreciate all of the support and the input I have received from our vice mayor, Ms. Lucas Burke, Councilman Tillage, our city attorney, Ms. Graham Williams, and our deputy city manager, Mr. James Wright, and our city engineer. Thank you for all, for all of what you do to help get this through, to help develop the packages, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future on public policy issues of importance to the city of Portsmouth. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have, and hopefully I'll have an answer. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Neal. This is a question pertaining to if there's a possible change in the structure of the House, well, the House, where we would have a Democratic-controlled House with that, and Senate. Would that cause for us to submit any additional legislation that we are holding back at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, Mayor, Dr. Whitaker. I think I understand what you're asking, and depending on the legislation that you may be considering, if it's something to deal with the charter, it's first-day legislation, so you would need to be able to have that up and ready and submit it at least by the 30th, I would believe, unless we wind up with a new incumbent, and they're giving them a little extra time, I'm told, to have it drafted and have it ready by the end of December. So you'd have to go through all the machinations of the public hearing and so on and so forth, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Neal, as a member of the statewide legislative committee, I know that we talked about, and I know you'll be on top of this, the SOQ funding. And I know that we talked about in the group that it's an archaic system, right, how we fund our schools? And I think there was a J-LOC study that they're looking at right now
Yes, sir.
to bring back some recommendations on how we can improve upon that particular process and make sure that we are adequately, from a state level, providing the resources. Can you speak to that? Is that something that, I know the J-LOC study probably is still outstanding, but will that be something that will be considered next year, or will the study just be completed next year for us to review?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. To my understanding, the study has been completed and the recommendations have been made.
Okay.
And any recommendations that's been made will come, become legislation that either the House or the Senate, or either both, education committees will probably, some member of there will introduce it. So we'll follow that closely, should that happen, and monitor it, and of course, speak to it as necessary.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, thanks so much for this brief. So thanks so much for this brief. Kind of your get-off-the-stage slide says that you're looking for adoption of both legislative packages. I'm trying to figure out which slide in here describes the legislative packages that you're looking to adopt. Can you help me out?
Yes, sir. So the legislative package would be the two budget amendments that I mentioned, the two legislative requests that I mentioned, and then we usually have a list of the statewide public policies that we support, which is in conjunction with the affiliation organizations that we work with. In brief.
Okay.
That's what the package would contain.
So Slide 8 is the second slide titled "State Budget Amendment," but it says 2023 State Budget Amendment, which suggests to me that that's old business already adopted.
Thank you for catching that error. Several people have looked at this and nobody caught it but you. It should be 2024.
Okay, so this is a new thing, not something already done.
Correct. Yes, sir. Thank you for correcting that.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, Ms. Neal, thank you for your work.
Thank you, and thank you guys for all your support, and I can look forward to seeing you in Richmond. Have a good night. So my next presentation will be an update on changes in trash collection. If councils would mind, I would like to do it from the podium.
Go ahead, ma'am. You can go forward and you have the floor.
Good evening, members of council. I was just in Portland family, Portsmouth family. I wanted to come before you just to give you some updates on the changes in trash collections because we've received a lot of information or questions that were missed. It was a lot of misinformation, so I'm hoping that I could clear that up here so that we could move forward. Starting November 13th, the following changes will occur as it relates to trash collections for the city of Portsmouth. So one, the new collection in Churchland. The dates of the trash pickup in Churchland will go from Mondays to Wednesdays. So that's because we have a new schedule as it relates to trash collection. So remember the last presentation we had in August, July, we talked about the dates changing because of so many holidays falling on a Monday. And so it was a burden on the citizens because they could, it was a hard way to keep up with scheduling. It was a hard time. We had trash left over. So to address some of those issues, trash collection days for the area, in this Churchland area, are from Mondays to Wednesdays. Okay? Second is bulk item pickup. Bulk item pickups will be on your normal trash days, so you'll still get the 52 days a year, 52 weeks a year. It's just that they'll be called to get scheduled instead of our trucks just riding around during your trash days. It's interesting because I've received different emails from different perspectives as it relates from the citizens, and some citizens said, hey, I never knew you didn't supposed to call. Why would you ride around all day looking for trash? Because the seniors actually call when there's trash to be picked up. There was a misinformation about there being additional fees for bulk pickup. There are no fees for additional pickup days. I think Councilman Barnes asked me about that because that was a question you were receiving as well. So there are no additional fees for bulk pickup. Eliminating alleyway collections.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor. Before we move from that topic, I have a question on the bulk.
Okay, sir. You have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Terry. The bulk pickup, the issue with 12, it was some information about there being 12. I didn't hear that mentioned here.
Right, because we were, when we first looked at this, 12 was the average number for picking up bulk trash. We even asked residents, hey, how many times did you even call last year? Because it seemed like people were super focused on 12. And we had most residents say, I didn't call at all. So what we did to eliminate all that confusion is we took away the idea of it being 12 times a year and just said, as long as you call in, we'll pick it up.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's, that's, so there's no limit on, okay.
No limit and no fees.
Mm-hmm, okay.
For residents. Contractors is a whole different situation, but for our residents. We eliminated alleyway collections that start November 13th. Senior special assistance, so the set-out program. We redeployed the set-out program because we were finding that there were citizens who were deceased and their trash was still being picked up as setup, set out. So we had seniors who were deceased and new people living in the residence, but we were going into their yard and picking up the trash because that just carried over. So we redeployed it and our citizens, our senior citizens have now come and supplied their application, so we will continue to pick up. Nothing stopped. We just made them confirm and verify that those citizens are still alive and able. And so existing participants, they need to reapply by October 31st. In order to do that, we've had our people go out and talk to the citizens just to make sure they didn't get missed because we had an application from last time and we didn't have anything currently. So we're knocking on doors. We're doing everything that we can to make sure we address those citizens. Also, there was something out that, it was some information that was changed. We have, if a citizen has two cans and they are paying for that additional can and they're seniors and they set it out, we will pick up both cans. So in order to stay informed, there is a website. We have online resources. Stay informed with other updated information as it relates to the website to www.porsmouth.gov/waste, offering collection schedules, recycle guidelines, bulk pickup requests, senior special, everything associated with waste management is there. And that's the phone number you can call if you have any questions. Of course, you can still call Bernadette, everybody else does, and the email for trash@porsmouth.gov. Right now, I'm still on the email, so I see everything that comes through because we're just monitoring to make sure that the system is flowing correct for our scheduled start date. Actions already taken, so we've created part-time positions to address citywide trash collection. We just did some reclassing to make sure that we had enough people picking up trash. Monthly, Monday trash collection date changed to Wednesday to better service the citizens, and that's the Churchland area that we discussed. We schedule bulk pickup for efficiency and effectiveness on the regular scheduled trash days. Again, no additional fees for scheduled bulk pickup days. Annual rent and leasing of waste fleet to reduce repair costs and replacement. You've seen the big white trucks with the city of Portsmouth logo on them. So again, the senior set-up program is just evaluated, we redeployed it just to evaluate and confirm and verify participants that qualify for compliance purposes. And again, additional trash cans can be collected for set-out program. There is no additional charge, no changes to the program. Question and answer.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Ms. Terry. Back to the bulk trash issue. So the call, when does that call have to be made by?
I think it's a 48, Mr. Stalin, two days. If they call within 48 hours, 48 hours of their collection. But we don't really turn anybody away. So the whole thing is to make sure we get it in in time for the trucks to go out for their scheduled route.
So, so is it 48 hours or is it?
48 hours. The max is 48 hours. I'm sorry, can you come up with that way? I don't have to seem like I'm providing, because drivers have to get the schedule in order to know where they're going, but. And this is Mr. Stallings, the Director of General Services.
Good evening. Everybody dies. Yeah. Hey, Dr. Whitaker. Yes, it's a max of 48 hours because we don't want them to set the trash out too soon either because then the neighbors call that they got waste sent out there.
So when you say a maximum of 48, you're saying that they can call 48 hours ahead of time? Is that what you're saying?
At a max, because what happens, they might do a Saturday project and the pickup ain't for Tuesday or something. So we don't want them to put it out there Saturday and Tuesday being a trash pickup day. Because it's going to set until the pickup day.
So, yes, to your question.
So if they, if they call within that 48 hours, will that be accommodated?
Yes, we, we'll schedule it based on their normal trash pickup day.
And the other question, what if on that street someone has placed bulk trash out but they didn't call? Will the trucks pick that, pick that up?
We're in that business. We're going to pick it up and we're going to try to find somebody to tag for that. Because if it's not at a residence house where it just sits inside the street.
No, no, no. I'm talking about if, if it's a residence.
Right.
Someone has placed bulk trash out, one house down called, but this house didn't. Will that be picked up?
If it's out, when we go to pick these guys up on it, because they all have the same pickup day in the neighborhood, we'll pick it up.
Okay, okay. And then as far as the actual call, is that a phone call or is that internet?
You can call the office or you can go online to the trash.
Okay.
Yeah, we built a whole online process where you can go in and it gives you all the guidelines of what is debris, what is trash, what are limbs, what is this, so that everybody is clear on what it is that they can, we can pick up for both of them.
And also if you dial that nude number, 8629, it also has about eight prompts. You know, if you got miss you can, if you want bulk pickup, schedule a live person, if you got a set-out program, it all prompts up there now so you don't keep calling back to a busy number.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Stallings, for being here tonight. Thanks, manager, for the, for the information and kind of clearing up because we've all been getting deluged with trash emails and phone calls. So one last question from me. In your bulk item, in the, in the second slide where it talks about bulk item pickup, you have a note here that says excludes storm debris, appliances, and other household items. What does that note mean? Does that mean you don't have to call or make arrangements to get those things picked up? Why are they excluded?
Because if there's a storm, you know, some people are stuck on 12. If you already had your bulk pickup that week in a storm or something, you know, all rules of all, we're going to pick it up.
Okay. But, and you're doing the same thing for appliances and household items? You see a stove or a sofa sitting out there, you're just going to pick it up?
Yes.
Whether they sign up or not?
Right.
Okay.
Right. We're in the business of waste.
I'm with you. I just want to make sure I understood what that meant.
Make sure we pick it up regardless, but we want the control of scheduling at the end of the day.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Intro Manager, thank you for your presentation. As some of my colleagues have said, clearing up this trash situation. I also have received numerous phone calls in regards to trash, bulk pickups, and things of that nature. The question I have is in regards to notifying the public. So what was presented today, I'm grateful for, but it contradicts the letter that was sent to people, to their houses. And so the letter that was sent out on October the 1st, it was dated October 1st, and it said the program would start October 1st. And so I just want to make sure that the citizens are getting this clear, clean information ahead of time. And not everybody watches city council meetings, and I know that the website was provided, but will letters go up back out? And this is in regards to the set aside program or set, the senior program. Will letters go back out between now and November 13th with these new guidelines? Because the letter does not state what was said today.
Yes, so letters went out or going back out. We've actually, we're including some information on water bills. We've knocked on doors. We've added phones, not phone tags, door tags. Inspectors are going out and talking to the different citizens. So, you know, it is being advertised as, as much as we can to inform the public. And the reason it said October before, we pushed it back to give people more time to understand the process and the changes that we're doing.
Most definitely. And my last question is in regards to the dump areas. I may mention to it last week, and I just want, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but how is the city working to protect the grounds and wetlands near the dumpster areas?
Okay, I'll bring something back on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor, please.
Mine's is brief. I just want to ask, can you get Charles Peak again?
Oh, yes. We'll, we'll add that to our route because that's a private dumpster there. So we were talking to Parks and Rec to see if we could switch it out and put one of our own dumpsters there and so that we can add that to our route.
Okay.
And I didn't know. Send me a picture, I know you got one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Manager, the question of eliminating the alleyways, is that applicable to the seniors who, and then the senior special assistance program? So say if someone who has the alleyway and they're living and they're a senior, so do they, are they able to make any arrangements for if they can't pull their can from the back to the front of their house? And some are saying they don't have sidewalks or they don't have a way, they have to pull it across grass or something like that, so.
For the beautiful part of the set-out program, we go into your yard and we pick up your trash can. So the alleyways shouldn't even be a concern for them. All they have to do is put it in their yard. They identify the area that it's going to be in and we go get it.
Okay. And then the second question, I know this, the bulk pickup is not applicable to contractors, but are they made aware or is there any marketing or information for them to know how they should appropriately discard their bulk?
Yeah, they're supposed to take their stuff to suffer, but we have some violators in our community who have decided that Portsmouth was a dumping ground. So once we get, you know, we're taking these things phases at a time, and so we're going to start really hitting those violators hard because again, they come into our city and they decide to mess our city up and, and decide to do whatever they want to. So we're pushing the hammer down on commercial contractors who dump in our city. And what, the thing for us is we need to really educate our citizens because they're the ones that's being taken advantage of. They're paying for these contractors to take this debris away. And it kind of encompasses the whole permits and inspections and some things that they need to get out here and do. When you see a home that's being added on or the roof is coming down, you should, we're making sure they go first to make sure they have a permit. And if they don't have a permit, why don't they? So it's a few steps here. When they're taking these shingles off the roofs or anything, they should have one of those commercial big trash cans.
Pods.
And if they don't have that, they're already in violation. So this helps us to kind of identify those things that are a little vulnerable in our city. We got work to do as it relates to that, but it's, it's a group effort for all departments in that area because they're really taking advantage of our seniors. They're really taking advantage of our citizens. And they're just dumping it instead of being prepared to, that's money the city is losing when they don't have those permitted items. So we're, it's another phase of this big phase.
Okay.
But it's, it's there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Terry, let me just make sure I'm clear on the exclusion item there, number two. So when it says residents must schedule all bulk item pickups, then it said excludes those items, storm debris, appliances, other household. When it says excludes, does that mean that they do not have to call for these items or they do call for these items?
Right. So if they don't call for those items and they're there, we'll pick them up. That's what Councilman Hugo was saying, just to make sure that people think that's not included. If it's there, we'll pick it up. Because what happens is, we have these big storms and people were saying, hey, if we have a storm and these branches fall off, is it going to be a part of my 12 times or however many times I'm allowed? So when there is a big storm or a debris like that, we're going to pick it up. That's who we are. That's the service we provide.
Right. Well, I'm speaking more to when appliances are placed out and no one calls.
We'll get them. If that's your trash week for pickup, we'll pick it up. You don't have to call for that. We'll get it.
Okay, so the truck is going to come through on regular trash days anyway?
Correct.
So if it's coming through on regular trash days anyway, so why do you have to call?
Because you schedule it, so we'll know. So what, so I guess the history would be better to understand. What was happening is people were just dumping and it wasn't on their trash day. They're just throwing stuff out, picking stuff up. We used to get a ton of calls, and Bernadette can attest to this, from citizens who said, hey, my trash day was Thursday, but... hey, my trash day was Thursday, but somebody came in the neighborhood and dropped off all this stuff. Well, the thing is, our inspectors should catch that. But what's, what was happening is they were just dumping all day long instead of it being scheduled for pickup. So this helps us to kind of structure and say, on this trash week, these are the days we're gonna be picking up bulk. We want to schedule it so we won't miss your street. I was getting a lot of, and I was getting calls where people say, I set it out, but nobody picked it up. And you asked the driver, did you see it? They said, no, it wasn't there. Or was it there when it was, when I was on that route? So this helps us to identify the violators. It helps us to be more structured. It helps us to be able to see what's really going on in the community and not waste time. Because before, we're just driving around and it didn't have to be your trash day. We're just driving around to see if we can find bulk. But if it's scheduled, we know that that week, on Thursday is your trash day, you scheduled a pickup, we know that we're gonna send our truck out there. Now we're not chasing trash around.
Right, but either way, the truck is coming through the neighborhood.
During your trash week.
Right, right, right. On the, on your trash day, the truck is gonna come through. So regardless of if someone calls or not, if it's out there, when the truck comes through, it's gonna be picked up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for clarifying the situation. My question, driving around the city, I see a lot of mattresses. So where, where, where do they fall in the pickup?
That's bulk, we'll pick it up. Most people should call. See, you know, and it's, again, we got people who are dumping mattress anyway. Fortunately, they're dumping it over at, at one of the sites, but we have people who are just violators. This is not gonna answer every single thing, but it's a start. We, our neighborhood inspectors have to get out there and start addressing some of these issues, in which they're doing now because it's a better structured situation. But we have people who have just done things that make no sense to me. And why? Because they just feel like they can. So, but mattresses are a bulk pickup item. We will pick those up.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam, Madam Manager, I want to thank your waste management team and all the city's staff for the hard work that you do. And I would ask my colleagues to just understand that it, you know, a lot of times when we make changes, it's a process. And I know it's different for citizens when they get different information, and it's important that we share information and that we talk to one another and we find a solution because ultimately, we want to make sure that we have a clean city.
Yes.
And that we're taking care of the needs of our customers and our citizens. So thank you and your team for being innovative and efficient.
Thank you.
And we're now at city manager report overview. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, while the manager is preparing to do her overview, if there's anyone in the audience that's trying to register to speak, if you would please give your card to my deputy clerk that's at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk, that way we can get you registered prior to 7:00 p.m. And we will take cards until 6:40. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Councilman Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
For time purposes and since we have to go into a closed meeting, I would say we skip this part since it's gonna come up anyway and the citizens are gonna know what we're voting on and just go into our closed session, if that's okay with council.
Madam Manager, are you fine with that?
Y'all okay with it? Okay, I'm fine with it.
Let's move forward. We, we do have a need for a closed session.
Mr. Mayor, for the closed session, we have the boards and commissions to discuss. Is that correct?
That was, again, provided for your information. It was given to you two weeks ago.
Right.
And hopefully, if anyone had any questions, they would have let the Personnel Committee know. But it was provided for your information. If you decided to do the appointments, great. If not, we can do it in two weeks.
Yeah, can we, because I thought we were gonna discuss it in closed session. I just noticed it's not up here.
You have a very heavy closed session.
Yeah, so.
So I didn't put it on.
So can, can it be deferred to the next?
Well, one, one of the challenges with deferring, we do have boards and commissions we need to fill with the, with the positions. That is why the information was given out. So I, I, I'll have to check and make sure, are, are we in compliance with filling those certain boards and commissions?
Yeah, can, are there any that need to be filled tonight?
It can wait.
Okay, well, we can, if we can wait for two weeks, then we can certainly defer it. Yes, sir. So we do have a need to go into closed session. So Vice Mayor, if you would please read the, the motion.
Thank you. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the city regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding Newport and collective bargaining and pursuant to Virginia subsection 2.2-3711A6 for the purpose of discussing and considering the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if public initially, the financial interests of the governmental unit would be adversely affected specifically regarding the Hampton Roads Regional Jail.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion read, and do we have a second?
Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
Oh, I thought it would.
Thank you, sir.
This item is adopted 7-0.
We are now in closed session. Members, we are in need of certifying our council closed session, and Vice Mayor, would you please read the motion to certify?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Senator.
I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. And that closes our closed session meeting, and I would just ask that if the citizens would be patient with us, we'll take a five-minute recess and we will begin at 7:19. Thank you.